Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 7th, 2021. Meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live on East Hampton Media Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. As always, thank you to the East Hampton Media Group for bringing these meetings to us. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely during the COVID-19 pandemic under an extension of an order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020 that has been extended to April of 2022, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Erica Flood?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Gazinski?
I see him.
But I heard, saw you. Tom, Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zaret?
Present.
Okay, let's stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the public, which stands one nation, under God.
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll take the motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd and June 16th.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Motion second for the minutes of June 2nd and June 16th. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Yeah, Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
All right. Now is the time in the agenda for public speak. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make any comments around anything other than what is on the public hearings for tonight? Just go ahead and hit the reactions button and then you can raise your hands in there. Okay, not seeing any. We will move on to, well, we have a few minutes till the public hearing. So we'll move on to communication from elected officials, boards, and committees. Would anyone like to have any communication? Steve, Linsky, what?
Hi, how are you?
Remind us what committee you're on, Steve.
Oh, I forget. I'm on so many.
I know.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry if I missed the public speak. That's why I want.
Oh, well, then go ahead.
Okay, because I believe you have an item on the agenda that I think we originally thought was at committee level, but it's, I think it's past committee level, and that is the decriminalization item on psychedelic drugs.
It is not past committee yet.
Oh, it's not?
It's still in committee.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe it's in rules. Is that correct?
Yeah, government, I'm sorry. So, okay.
We haven't even talked about it, honestly. So we're going to talk about it tomorrow night.
Great. Okay, thank you. There was some confusion about whether it was before the council tonight or was at committee. Okay, so, so that will take care of that.
Well, it's lovely to see you anyway, Steve.
We're going to try to, on behalf of the Healthy Youth Coalition, we'll try to get some kind of communication in advance. I don't know if we can participate tomorrow, but at least I thought I probably, because I thought it was on tonight's agenda.
No worries.
Thank you. Have a great meeting.
You too, Stephen. Take care.
Go with peace. Yes.
Bye-bye. Okay, anyone else from a committee who would like to do any communication? Any elected officials that would like to do any communication? Okay, Dan, do you have anything to announce for Vice President Communications?
No, I do not, Madam President.
I do not either. Mayor, do you have any communicate, well, she's not quite. Mayor, do you have any communications for mayor speak at this point? She's still working on audio. We're clearly moving way too fast. Let's all sit and talk and ponder our lives for a moment while her audio kicks in. Mayor, can you hear me? Okay. All right, well, we still have 10 minutes, so we can launch into reports of standing committees until 6:15. Dan, do you want to start with finance?
Yeah, and I will go into the interdepartmental transfer. We might be a little late, but I have two new business.
Dan, you're on mute. Dan?
My apologies. I will read the two new business and the interdepartmental transfer. I think I could do them pretty quick.
Okay.
The first interdepart- Give me a second. Got to get to it. This will be a first reading. Supplemental appropriation request is coming from the Community Preservation Act. The request is for $58,083 to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Affordable Housing, $58,083. To be appropriated to the Valley CDC Housing Redevelopment Assessments, $58,083. For the following purpose for conducting planning and pre-development tasks necessary for the creation of new affordable rental housing in East Hampton. The second CPA, I got to get to it, appropriation is for $15,000. This appropriation is from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $15,000 to be appropriated to the Hampshire-Hamden Canal History Survey for the following purpose for the regional collaboration to hire consultants to assist with the historic documentation and preservation of the Hampshire and Hampden portions of the New Haven and North Hampton Canal. I move that these two items be sent to Finance Committee and also in one motion be set for public hearing at our August meeting.
Second to both?
Motion second to move these two appropriation requests to the Finance Committee and also to set a public hearing on August 4th, or for a public hearing. Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
So colleagues on the council, we have an unusual situation in which we have an interdepartmental transfer for Medicare and other late fiscal year issue with, I'm sorry, school Medicare tax and city Medicare tax. The state Massachusetts general law was changed in 2016 to allow the last two months of the fiscal year and the first 15 days for cities and towns to use this method to avoid charter mandates and pass interdepartmental transfers to close the books on the previous fiscal year. This is only all that is required if we use this Massachusetts general law is a council majority vote. The president and I have chosen this as it is in the interest of closing the books and all of the funds that are being dealt with this evening, the reserve funds were already appropriated through the budget process and they had a public hearing, et cetera. This is an interdepartmental transfer, not an appropriation. This is not new funds. It's funds that we've already appropriated through the budget process. We had two choices, which we went over with the city attorney. One was to use the MGL or the charter mandates. The charter mandates would have required two readings, sending it to committee and a public hearing. That requirement would have put us into dire straits and probably passed the July 15th deadline. As Hadel will tell you, if you ask, that would require us, if we missed the deadline, to recap all of our taxes, and we don't want to do that. So we're just closing the books. This particular interdepartmental transfer is from the reserve fund, which is considered a quote-unquote "department" because we approve it as a department for this purpose, so that we can transfer funds from it to any department in need. At the end of the fiscal year, it comes in handy, so we can do this. Now, this Medicare tax issue comes up because at the end June, step increases, new collective bargaining salaries were added. And although in 2019 in March, our previous auditor caught the fact that we might need this and asked for funds ahead of time, we need to remember that we have, we were in transition between a new human resource director, Emily didn't start, and Hadal isn't, was new, so this didn't occur. We are promised by Hadal that next year we will keep an eye on the Medicare and tax because that always changes depending on how the payroll fluctuates. So this is really simple, but it is a requirement that we do this without charter mandates this evening or we face a serious tax recap issue. Hadal, have I said everything correctly?
Yes, you did, Counselor Rist.
Okay, so councilors, I'm going to make a motion to, in one reading, approve this this evening. If you have any questions, now's the time to ask.
Anybody have any questions before we put this to a vote? Not seeing any.
I move that the city council approve an interdepartmental transfer, the amount requested is $17,567.95 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $17,567.95 to be transferred to the school Medicare tax account, $7,663.28 and a city Medicare tax, $9,904.67 for the following purpose, to provide funding for the city and school Medicare tax for fiscal year 2021.
Second?
Motion in a second to approve the following interdepartmental transfer from the reserve fund to the Medicare tax funds. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
To conclude, we will have a meeting by Zoom at 5 o'clock on the 14th to discuss the two CPA appropriations. And that concludes, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, we will now we'll go into the public hearings right now. So Dan or someone, if you'd like to.
Move the public hearings be open.
Second.
Motion second open the public hearings. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist? Dan, I hear, see his mouth.
I see, I see.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings are now open. First item on the public hearing is an amendment to the city ordinance for stormwater management. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have here is something that the DPW has been working with tie and bond, and it's a requirement that the deadline is kind of looming here. I think it actually passed on June 30th, but since we are in progress. And so I see that Greg Nellman's here, so I'll let him kind of explain the details for you guys.
So we were required by the EPA to update language in our city stormwater ordinance and to remain in compliance with our municipal storm sever sewer permit, our MS4 permit. And this is just the, the Board of Public Works approved the language changes. Ordinance Committee did earlier this year, and we just need final approval of the council just to remain in compliance with the EPA's requirements.
Any questions? From councilors? Any questions from the public? I just have one question. Salem, do we have the language that it was changed to? Was that in a prior packet or we have, okay. All right. No, Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I participated in this. The changes, there's a lot of fairly minor changes that go throughout it. At the end of the day, you know, we reviewed it and came to the conclusion that, first of all, none of the changes were terribly objectionable. But also, there really isn't much of a, we didn't really feel like there was much of a choice on this one, like, because if we don't do it, then we're going to be in trouble with the state. So it just seems like a no-brainer to me.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from either the public or city council?
Well, I just wanted to say that this did pass three to zero in the ordinance committee. And we also, you know, as Tom said, we did review it, even though I don't think any of us really have the expertise to do a deep dive of the technical aspects of this. You know, I think we were, we did review each change and, and we also, you know, specifically, we're looking at how this could affect potential development in East Hampton and tried to look at it with that lens as well. So while we're not skilled stormwater management experts, we did our best.
Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, Salem, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I move to amend city ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 7, Stormwater Management Ordinance and Article 8, illicit discharge detection and elimination ordinance.
Second? Motion in a second to amend the city ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 7 and Article 8. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Gazinski?
I think he said aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Derby. The next item on the public hearing is city ordinance amendment for ranked choice voting. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so this has been a little over a year in the works, but the ranked choice voting ad hoc committee has completed our review. Just to give you, like, we ended up, like, a lot of the parameters that we set, we really closely associated them with what our existing software can do to make sure that the process of the existing software is in compliance with what we want to do. And in cases where there were multiple options, we discussed those options, which for the most part don't actually make much of a difference in terms of the ultimate results, but just sort of the workflow. And we're, a lot of what we did was sort of working around sort of the workflow for how to process things like write-ins and stuff like that. So the ordinance is now available. I think to really introduce it, I'll turn it over to the committee's chair, who's, which is Dan Gilbert. And he can sort of walk you through what this is gonna, what this looks like.
Great. Hi, Dan. Welcome.
Hi, guys. Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I mean, I, Tom covered a lot of it. This is not a particularly long ordinance. We tried to keep it brief. Another goal of the committee, well, actually, I'll start by saying that there were no major disagreements on the RCV ad hoc committee. We, 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 you know, we operated as a majority, but there was pretty much unanimity in most of the big changes and most of the big decisions that we made. So the ordinance is software agnostic. That was one of the decisions that we made. So it's, it doesn't specifically speak to the software, and that's because software is something that can change with vendor and machine. But we did write it with the current vendor and the current machines in mind in terms of their capabilities, so. Like I said, it covers, it covers kind of the overall tabulation process. It covers various software settings that could, some have an effect on the results and some don't. The committee, myself in particular, thought it was important to have a public document that explained some of those software settings in, in plain English, which is an amendment here. It's not specifically part of the ordinance, but we included it and did it in advance of the ordinance being submitted because, you know, because I wanted, I wanted the city council to see what it would look like. You know, this is something that can be changed and updated by the city clerk's office in future years, but it's a plain English explanation of the various settings that do have an effect, and those effects are reasonably small. But the committee did discuss them in depth. A lawyer hired by the city has reviewed the ordinance twice, and we've had an opportunity to revise it based on both of those reviews. There are no outstanding issues from the lawyer. And yeah, other than that, I'll take any questions that folks have about specifics. Yeah.
Counselor Rist?
Thank you. Two questions. What happened in New York City disturbs me, but I know we're not New York City. Barbara, absentee ballots and mail-in voting, is that counted on the same day as the vote? Or do we delay all this because like they did in New York?
No, absentee ballots and by mail have always been voted, you know, put, you know, it's always done by election day. At this past time, we were able to process ballots ahead of time, but, you know, they're always, they're always done, you know, right in with all the rest of the ballots.
So the results, if I understand this correctly, if we have a ranked choice voting need because there's three candidates and nobody's gotten 50% in the first tabulation, is that immediate, Dan? Does that happen immediately through the software? Or does Barbara have to push a button or something? I'm just curious about that.
Well, good, good question. Thanks, Dan. A button does need to be pressed in the software. So what we get at the polls at the end of the night is what we have always gotten at the polls at the end of the night, which is first choice votes. So we have, that looks almost identical to what we have now, and those are unofficial results and they're posted at the polls. And then, you know, and some of this is, is up to the discretion of, of the clerk's office as to how they want to release preliminary results or not. But we will be dealing with write-ins the day after, and we will be dealing with any ballots that are unreadable by the machine. So if it's mangled, if it's marked oddly and the machine scanners can't really read it, we're going to be dealing with those the day after. Once those two processes are finished, the write-in reconciliation and the unreadable, any unreadable ballots, then we can run a a full tabulation and get results within about five to 10 seconds.
So you're talking about the next day? Is that what I'm hearing?
The next day. Now, you know, similar to how, how, you know, some other municipalities have done it, we could do a preliminary result before, before those are taken into account. I wouldn't necessarily recommend it. I don't, I don't particularly think that's a great idea, but there's nothing stopping us from releasing those preliminary results.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Barb ask or say what she needs to.
Okay, so how, how I think we're gonna, I mean, this is how I envision us doing this. Election results on election night are always unofficial results. They always have been. I don't see any reason why, you know, we'll wrap things up at the polls. The machines will come back to my office. I think we'll take the memory cards out of the machines and we'll run it through. You know, we'll put it into the software and we'll run that report. Now, chances are the write-ins and any odds and ends that aren't able to be read won't really, they won't, very unlikely that they would change anything. But anything that comes out on election night, and I think, you know, we should make sure that people know that's unofficial. But I don't see any reason not to run, you know, to put the memory cards into the software, run the report and put that out there as the unofficial result.
So you're saying you would?
Hang on, Dan, hang on. I want to make sure everybody gets their questions in. Counselor Peak?
So just to put it another way, like, if somebody wins by 200 votes and there's only 50 write-ins, then they're going to still count those up, but there's no way that that changes the result. So there's a possibility that, and this is always the case on election night, there's a possibility the results come in and they're so close that that stuff that has to be gone over the next day is going to make a difference. In most elections, it won't, but that is always a possibility.
And, and since the dawn of elections in East Hampton, we've had mangled ballots and write-ins that have to be counted the next day. So that is not new, right?
No, that's, that's not correct. We've always done them at the polls.
Oh, really? The same day?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. But then, you know, it always is like you want to make sure you double-check your numbers.
Yeah.
Sure you don't have anything trans, you know, so that the numbers that come out on election night are never, ever official.
Okay, Dan?
So just to clear it up, the first tabulation is like it always is. We need a ranked choice voting tabulation because somebody in a three-way race for mayor, for instance, doesn't have 50% of the vote. Barbara, you're going to do it that night because you feel it's unofficial. And then the next day, if it's real close, the next day may be involved. But if I understand it, that night we'll have an unofficial result ranked choice voting-wise.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
Right. And at the polls, I mean, the machines will print out a printout, just like they always have. It'll just be, Dan, correct me, that will just show the first, the first rankings? Yeah. So, I mean, we'll still put that up on the wall, and if it, if it's clear that somebody has 50%,
Stop.
I mean, it's done.
Okay, that's all I want. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan Gilder.
Two, two quick points. One, our, Barbara mentioned that previously the, the write-ins and machine unreadable ballots were done at the polls, which was in, you know, open to the public and in view of the public. And I just want to stress that our current day-after processes to deal with this are also open to observation by the public. This is not a situation where the public loses any access. And in fact, you know, it might be easier for interested members of the public to observe because these, these, you know, processes are going to be very specific to what, to what they're doing. One of them is done by a panel of three people. So these are, in some ways, I think even more transparent, or at least as transparent as, as prior. And second, just because, you know, the New York election is on everyone's minds and we just got the, the final results yesterday, the sort of debacle with that, the Board of Elections has come out and said, and, and others as well, and just to reiterate, that debacle had nothing to do with ranked choice voting. That had to do with them including sample ballots in their preliminary results. So, you know, that could easily have happened in a non-ranked choice election, and it was simply coincidence that this was their first use of RCVs. But, and, and I give them some credit for being very clear about that. The Board of Elections statement made that very clear, too. So it's, it's unfortunate to see for a Board of Elections or an election to have a sort of screw-up like that, but it is clear that it did have nothing to do with their adoption of ranked choice voting.
Okay. Barbara?
I did, I did, just want to make everybody, make sure you all know that on March 31st, we did run a test election. And at that, that test, we, we had the vendor, LHS, a few people from that LHS. We also had the Director of Elections. She came to make sure that everything, that she liked how everything looked. We did talk about doing the day-after adjudication and write-ins, and she was fine with that. So, you know, the ballot that you, we included with the agenda packet is, is what we did, and that's what it's kind of going to look like. But I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we've worked really closely with LHS, the vendor. They, you know, right from the very beginning, made sure that what we put in the, in the ordinance was going to work with the software because that's very important. And Elections Division is aware of, you know, what's going on as well. We also talked to an elections person from Cambridge, which is the only place right now that does ranked choice voting, but their ranked choice voting is very different from anybody else's in probably the world. And it's very complicated, and ours is not going to be that complicated. But it was still good to, because they do the day-after adjudication as well. It was, it was interesting to talk to her. So we haven't been doing this in a vacuum, just us sitting on Zoom.
Right. Thanks, Barb. Counselor Gazinski?
Dan, first of all, thank you so much for being here on this project and for all the help you did on our city council ranked choice voting election. Great job. Maybe this is digging into the weeds, but, and I wanted to be sure I understood the answer, and maybe I missed something, so please help me. And maybe I missed something, so please help me with that. I believe you said that some of the choices you made in determining the software buttons, the software decisions affected the outcome of, might affect the outcome of the election. And that always picks up my ears. I want to be sure the public understood if there was something there like, okay, that this will change the results somehow. Just wanted to be sure that you explain that for us.
JP, that's a fantastic question. Thank, thank you for, for asking it. It's, it's, you know, I don't even consider that to be the weeds, although I'm happy to get into the weeds because this committee certainly, you know, had to, to, to write this ordinance. There is a difference between decisions that are made about an election that could potentially affect the result and processes of an election that would somehow change the result. So I want to make it very clear that there is nothing involved in the ranked choice voting process or the software decisions that we made that would open up to a result somehow being changed by any, any individual's discretion or, or any sort of, I don't know. I, I, I just, I just want to make that extra point that these are decisions we were making in advance about how the election is conducted and how it's tabulated that are then rigidly followed through the, you know, beginning, middle and end of the election and the tabulation. So that all the candidates and all the voters can be fully informed about what the process is, and then that process is completely transparent. So there's no muddling of anything. There's no changing. Everything can be justified in terms of these settings and these guidelines. So to, to give you an idea of what those things are, there is the software settings tabulation, software settings sort of write-up. It's a single sheet and it's, it's in your packet. It's after the ordinance. Like I said, it's not an official part of the ordinance. Its creation and existence and availability is dictated by the ordinance. And this is something that'll be on the city website and will also be posted at the polls at every polling location. And what it covers are the few decisions that we did, that we made as a committee for how the tabulation will proceed that do have an effect on the count, right? There are some settings, for example, like, do you want the software to pause between rounds? So that you can see each individual round as, as it's being tabulated. That's the, that's an example of a setting that does not affect the result at all. Just it's a, it's a sort of user interface decision. So this does not include settings like that, that the committee did discuss, but we felt did not need to go into the ordinance. However, there are these few that do have an effect. And to give you an example, I'm not, I, I'm happy to go through each and, you know, any questions that come up. I, I think it's, it's actually a good use of, this is, this is the place for those things to be discussed. I'm also available to discuss it offline, but, but I think this is a great, as, as is anyone really on the RCV committee. But to give you, to give you a good example of this is, is skipped rankings. So something that voters can do on a ranked choice voting ballot is they can mark a choice for first, first preference. And then they can skip if they want the second choice and then mark a third choice, right? This is not recommended, but it's something that's physically possible to do on a ballot. This happens sometimes with a lot of candidates. If somebody really likes someone, they'll mark them first and they really dislike somebody, they will mark them last. So this, this brings up an interesting dilemma, which is how do we tabulate us, right? Remember ranked choice voting, you need first choice votes to win and each person only gets one vote, right? So if your first choice is eliminated, only then do your subsequent ones come into play at all. So when there's these skipped rankings, we have to decide how is the software going to determine them? So as this little sheet explains, if someone skips a ranking, we do not consider lower rankings. This was a choice. We could have said, if someone skips a ranking, then we move up their lower rankings. So that three, that third preference would then become a second preference, if that, if their first choice was eliminated. The reason that we don't do that is kind of because of what I just talked about. Sometimes voters will rank somebody they really like and then they'll skip over everything else and they'll rank somebody they really don't like. In that kind of case, which is documented, people, you know, this is a way that people will sometimes vote. We don't want to interpret their, what I, I call it sort of a hate vote, their extreme dislike vote as a second choice. Because their intent, their probably, when you see something really high and something really low is I really like this person, everyone else I don't really have an opinion about, and then I have a very negative opinion about this, this last person. So we decided that that was a better way of dealing with those particular ballots, those, that particular circumstance. As opposed to bumping it up and causing that potential sort of extreme dislike vote to be interpreted as a second choice. Now.
Dan, so this kind of stuff?
Yeah.
You're saying will be posted at the polling place?
Correct. That, so that sheet that you see, that little printout, that's not part of the ordinance. That, that sheet, you know, the clerk's office has discretion to amend and modify that sheet. But it can also just be used in the form it's in. It's, it's in a good shape and the committee has approved it. So that, that sheet can, will literally be the sheet to be posted. And so any, any voter, any candidate, et cetera, can, can read that and see exactly how these situations are handled. And, and there's, you know, there's not many of them. Over, overvotes and undervotes are the two primary things that that sheet addresses. And, and undervotes and overvotes are, are one, you know, undervotes are the skipped rankings I just talked about. And overvotes are when two people are marked for the same ranking. Again, the software does need to be told, how do we handle this? So again, these are things, they do not change the result of the election whatsoever. They are rules that we set up well in advance of the election, but they do have an effect on the tabulation. They affect how it's counted.
Dan, I, I want to thank you so much for that, that explanation. I think that kind of frames the, the project so the, the public can go to the polls with good confidence that their vote will be counted in the way that they want to.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and I'll add that this committee is not dissolving. We're going to continue working and what we're going to continue working on is, is education. So we, we have funds appropriated for a mailer to go to every city address. So that has not yet been written or designed, but it will go out before our first ranked choice voting election. And we're gonna, we're also looking into other ways of doing voter education and outreach. We want everyone to be informed about how this works. And that's going to include people at the polls, you know, being there to help people if they have questions about it. Having this printed information there and, and being able to, to mail something to, to every city address and P O box, so.
Counselor Wrist?
I, I want to thank you. I was going to ask about that mailer. I'm just going to say this, and I know you guys know this so well, this ranked choice voting. But you need to remember that you need to make it idiot-proof. Don't make it too complex. Don't make it too geeky. Sorry for the term. We need to make sure people understand it in the simplest terms. What you just described, if you vote and you mark no ballot, you know, the fifth ballot, there's five people running and you mark number five, that's going to stay there. As simple as you can, if you need to explain things, that's all I'm going to ask you to do because we're going to get a ton of calls. What does this mean? And of course, I'm going to give them your phone number, Dan.
Right?
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
We're, Dan, we're on the same page. I, I completely agree.
Okay. Anything else? Dan Gilbert? Anything else? Tom Peak? Counselor Zaret, I saw your hand go up.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just, I, I served on the committee as well. Just wanted to give quick input just because I deferred most of the times to our, our resident experts and participated where I could. It was an honor to serve and I was, I think Mr. Gilbert touched upon, you know, how most, the, the committee was pretty much in harmony with the decisions we made. And it was really a pleasure to collaborate with everyone else involved. I see Sarah Marosa's here and obviously with Barbara. So I'm looking forward to the rest of the discussions. And just as another member of the committee, I don't have any particular concerns about the conclusions we came up with. And obviously thanks to, to everyone and Dan, great job chairing it. So thanks.
Any other questions from anyone of the council? Any questions from, that was a very timid, raise your hand, Lindsay?
Well, it's not really a question. It's not really a question. It's just, um, I'm just, I love this, the, the tabulation settings handout or whatever that you created. And I know that many of us volunteered in the ranked voice, ranked vote, ranked, ranked choice voting initiative to do a little info PR. So I'd be happy to do, I'm sure other people would, but I'd be happy to do an infomercial and just like explaining it. Put my teacher hat on, so anything I can do to help, that's all.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Do we need a motion, Mr. Peak?
I will make a motion to amend the city ordinance's chapter two by adding a new article six entitled ranked choice voting.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend city ordinance chapter two by adding article six ranked choice voting. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Wrist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, guys. Great job.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close public hearings.
Can I move the public hearing to the floor?
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Barbara?
But, Dan Wrist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Okay, the public hearings are now closed. We'll continue on with the agenda. Mayor, I think you were trying to log in when we were trying to get some other work done before the public hearings and we are now at Mayor Communications. Do you have anything you would like to say? No. I don't know why I thought that was funny. Um, okay. We'll continue on with the reports of committees and we are now at Public Safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start with, I want to make a motion to extend the review of the Major's Pledge Group Report for 90 days.
Second.
Motion second to extend the Mayor's pledge to reimagine policing report to, for 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Wrist?
Hi.
Motion passes.
So we met last night and we had Chief Norris. He's giving us a quarterly report now from the Fire Department. I encourage everybody to watch the video. The report was kind of long. So I don't want to repeat everything what he said, but I'm going to try to be summary, something, some stuff that he said last night. The Fire Department hired three new firefighters. So now that we comply with the, with the grant that we had two years ago, if I remember correctly. Yeah, so, so he have that. He told us the two of the, of the ambulance, they have over 100,000 miles and it's time to replace them. He applied for the grant and he's still waiting for the answer of one of the grants. And he is expecting to come to the mayor and then probably to us to ask for money for the next, the new ambulance. But that was part of the conversation. And he presented some numbers for their revenue, that the Fire Department is having now. And she, he explained us how that works when he send the bills and Medicare have some, they're already set up, how much they, they're going to pay with Medicare and, and, and the difference between how he send the bills and how we receive the money. And he explained to the committee how he's managing all the money and all the money is going to generate funds. He explained the, the contract with West Hampton is, is working pretty, pretty well for, for our community. And basically that was it. The, the, the department is, is upgrading and doing everything where they need to have all the equipment necessary to keep it updated and keep safe for our firefighters and keep safe our community.
Let me, can I ask a question, Counselor Gomez? Is, is a report from the Fire Department going to be an ongoing thing for you? Like, are you going to get something quarterly and should we get that onto the agenda for here? Because I, was it on the agenda for the other day?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need to get it on this agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, we contacted Barbara and that's why we put it on the agenda because we don't think it was necessary to send it to the full city council. And that's why yesterday I sent the report to all the counselors and I hope everybody got it. But yes, we, we can add it to the, to this agenda, to the.
Yeah, I mean, it's a Barb thing. I just want to make sure that.
Yep. No, she knows.
Okay. If it's going to be an ongoing.
Yeah, we're going to do it quarterly. Yep.
Perfect.
And I, and I hope an official, we have the Police Department too. So then we move for the Major's Pledge Group Report. Like I said last time, we invite the Senator Velez and State Rep Dan Carey. Sadly, they didn't, couldn't make it because there was a session yesterday and they couldn't make it. They were stranded from Boston. But the State Rep, Dan Carey sent us the summary of the new bill, the, the reform, the, the police reform from the, from, from the state level. And because we received it yesterday, so what we're going to do is we're going to review it. We're going to compare the new reform with the Major's Pledge Group Report. And we're going to discuss that at the next meeting and probably in the next couple of minutes, we're going to bring the report with a recommendation to the mayor. We can tell the mayor what to do, but we can tell her, you know, we recommend you to do this or that. And that's what we're going to plan to do.
So again, sorry. So when you present that, you will present it in the setting of a public hearing? And in this meeting? Or how, how is that report going to be kind of communicated out? And are you targeting, well, August probably won't happen, so you're probably targeting September for that?
Yep, yep. Yeah, September probably is, is going to be the, the, when we're going to start bringing that report back. And I don't believe that we need to do public hearing. That's up to you, President Coniff. But I think, but I, but I think it will be good for the community to, to listen to them and be part of the conversation. I, I think we need, it, it's going to be a good option if we have it.
Okay.
And we schedule our next meeting to August 10th at 7:00 PM and that concludes.
Could I ask, there is a new?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I saw it. I'm sorry. I have in my notes.
Don't worry.
I do have it.
Latecomer.
So I will make a motion to move to the public safety, the request to review safety of the sidewalk on South Street and Main Street intersection.
Motion second to move the request to review the safety of the sidewalk to the Public Safety Committee. Any further discussion? Salem Derby?
So I, I put this forward and I just wanted to explain really briefly before we've voted to committee. So this was something that was an ongoing item that was, that we had discussed in public safety previously. It was, it was in the PV PC report, report. And, and basically next to College Highway Variety, the, the sidewalk was paved over and it is being used as a parking lot. And so I was reminded by a constituent when they had to walk into the street with their baby stroller, trying to get from the other side of South Street to the bike path, that that was something that we needed to address. So that's why I brought it forward.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski? Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you for reminding me that we have that and that concludes.
I don't have much to do here, so I I enjoy it when I can do those kinds of things. Appointments, Counselor Rothschild?
We had voted to ou to recommend the the appointment of Brad Radley, Brad Riley.
Wow.
I'm sorry, it's a long day. However, we learned that that because according to I think Mass General law that seat needs to go to a a union member. Was it Mass General law? Is that why, Barb? So I think the mayor is going to withdraw that appointment. It was very unfortunate because Brad would be a great fit for the housing authority. He brings a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, a lot of passion. So hopefully we'll find a way to get him on it in the future. We had Elizabeth Rist's appointment before us too, but due to the internet outages that were happening, we didn't get her reply email in time to discuss it. So we're going to have to do that in the next in the next meeting. So I, but I will move to move the following mayoral appointments to the appointment committee. Kenneth, how did I pronounce his last name? My Vecchia to the alternate position on the planning. Vecchia on the planning board with the term expiration 12/31/2023.
Second.
Motion second to move Ken Vecchia to the planning board to the mayoral appointment. I'm sorry, to the appointments committee. Lindsay, I'm catching whatever you have. To the appointments committee. Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Barbara, do we need to formally vote to remove that second nomination that the mayor is going to remove or should we wait until the mayor withdraws it?
Well, it's the mayor's appointment, so I don't think it should come from her.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, yeah, Counselor Rist?
This is awkward for me. Lindsay, we have a 45 day charter mandate for approving or disapproving, for disapproving an appointment. So if you wait till August.
Okay.
Think that unfortunately my daughter, not unfortunately, shoot, but my daughter is probably appointed anyway. So I just want to remind everybody, we extended that charter. It used to be 30 days to 45 days to account for one meeting in each summer month. So just so you know, that's that's something that's out there and I I don't know if that's going to apply in this case, but 45 days is what we are allowed to debate a mayoral appointment and approve it or disapprove it.
So we're.
If we do not vote on it, it's automatic. It's automatically approved. So.
I mean, oh, I mean, we did get, we did get a response. It was just that before we could discuss it. So I mean, I'm, you know, I'm fine with it just happening.
I mean, we have, we have two scenarios then, if that's true, Dan. We have the one that the mayor put forth will automatically go correct, even though, or will that by default, because they need to be a union person not go? I mean, we have to do both of these, I think. Otherwise, they'll both be approved de facto.
I think we have to disapprove. I'm sorry, I interrupted, but we have to disapprove Brad because otherwise it's automatic.
Right.
Even though, even though the mayor will probably send it, I I I'm just remembering the charter. I have to go look at it, but
Yeah.
we have to vote on it. Barbara, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I think you you could vote to disapprove it due to the person not having the qualifications needed for the position.
Yep.
But I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. So should I make a motion to?
Erica has her hand up.
Just like a point of clarification.
Who's talking? Oh, hi, Erica.
The committee, they didn't miss the meeting, correct? We just haven't had the meeting. So I'm a little confused. I know we spoke with Brad, but the Elizabeth thing is new to me. I haven't gotten this information. So what is?
It was presented to the city council on June 2nd. And then it went to your committee. And so from June 2nd, we count 45 days per the charter. And if no action is taken on it, it is the same as approving it.
Okay, thank you for helping to just clarify.
No worries, no worries. So we have to vote down Brad and then then it's the question of the other one on whether we we just let that ride and get approved. So why don't you make the first motion, Lindsay?
Okay, I'll make a motion to not approve the appointment of Brad Riley to the East Hampton.
Do it, do it in the positive and we'll vote in the negative. Do it as to approve Brad and then we will vote.
Oh, and then you vote, you vote against it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. This is so confusing. Okay, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Brad Riley to the East Hampton Housing Authority with a term ending 12/31/2022.
Motion second to approve Brad to the Affordable Housing Committee. Barbara?
Salem Derby?
No.
Yeah, I know. Erica Flood?
No.
Omar Gomez?
No.
JP Kozinski?
For the above stated reasons, no.
Tom Peak?
I really hate to say no on this one. I guess I have to.
Yeah, Dan Rist?
I'm sorry to know.
Lindsay Rothschild?
With deeper regrets, no.
Owen Zaret?
Yes, just for the record, no, just to remove from consideration.
Wait, what's your vote? I'm sorry.
It's a no vote, but just clarify that the intent is to remove him for consideration as.
Okay, okay.
Peg Coniff?
No. Okay. Brad is not going to be on the affordable housing because he is not.
No, Housing Authority.
Oh, Housing Authority, because he does not meet the requirements of the Housing Authority Committee Board. Okay, now what do we do about? Is it Elizabeth Rist? So back to the original issue. If we wait until the August meeting for you to bring her forth for approval, she will de facto already have been approved because 45 days will have gone by. If you're cool with that, you're cool with that. Otherwise, we can vote tonight and do the affirmative. Counselor.
I can make a, I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to inform from the public where they can find that information and the charter is section 2.10, if I don't miss it up, I think is, yeah, the section 2.10 when they said appointment of the mayor shall become effective 45, 45 day following the date on the wish notice to the proposed appointment was filled with the clerk of the council unless the city council show with the the set 45 days vote to reject it, social appointment. Or unless the city council, anyway, see, just keep going there, but it's section 210 for the public if they need to find it.
Okay, thank you.
So I I read her responses to her questions and I would like, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
There was, we didn't, we didn't discuss it in our meeting. There was.
Yep, and I'll get to it, Counselor Kozinski. Yep, I'll get to it. I will get to it. Hang on. Lindsay, so you're going to be asking for the approval for this person?
Yes.
Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, President Coniff. Yeah, my question to the to the committee, just for the sake of the record, I'm assuming that the applicant's materials were reviewed and just asking if there were any concerns to better inform my vote.
There were no concerns. I can look at it again right now to refresh my memory, but.
Can I refresh? I'm sorry, I'm thoroughly confused. Did I miss a meeting because I?
No, this is what happened, Erica. No, Erica, what happened was, Erica, what happened was we sent the emails out to Brad and Elizabeth. And I didn't hear anything back from Elizabeth and I sent her another email. That happened to be a day in East Hampton where because of outages, emails weren't getting through.
But since she received a response and the rest of the committee has not, I'm just making sure that because I.
I think I forwarded, but let me check.
I see nothing. So I cannot vote on that. I'm sure she's a lovely person and I know, I'm just saying, I've not had a chance to review the materials, so I'm. Just to be very clear and very transparent, if we do nothing tonight, she is on the committee. I hear that, but I'm not going to vote when my charge is to review materials. So I just want to, you know.
Well, just so you know, Erica, Erica, I sent it to you on June 8th. I sent it to you and JP Kozinski on June 8th. So I just checked my sent email. I forwarded immediately to both of you. So it's okay if you didn't take time to review it, but I'm just letting you know that I it was sent.
Yeah, I'm just thoroughly confused because there's nothing in my email box, my inbox. I'm looking at it right now. So that's all. Okay. So, um, we can, we can, it's up to you, Counselor Rothschild, if you want to present it and we'll vote or if we just de facto let it go. Wait, hang on, Counselor Rist. Go ahead, Lindsay.
What I would like to do is I am not going to present it. I'll let her just get on and the next meeting, then I'm going to review why her qualifications after she just de facto gets on.
Okay, Counselor Rist?
I was just going to suggest that send her resume because perhaps Erica didn't get it because of the same problem. A lot of people didn't get emails back then. And if, this is awkward for me, but if everybody abstained tonight, then she would be voted down and that would be not the intent, I don't think, of the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will just let that ride. Okay. And you've moved the other, did we move the other? We did, Ken. We moved to your committee.
And our next meeting is June 28th, no, July 28th. I'm just going to go to sleep right now. July 28th at 5:00 PM, the Wednesday.
Okay.
And that concludes.
That was the most exciting committee report we have had in a long time. So thank you for that, Counselor.
It's never happened, by the way.
So yay. Okay, Counselor Derby, ordinance?
Thank you, Madam President. Ordinance met last Tuesday, I believe it was the 30th. We discussed some changes to the plastic ordinance. And you can see the other item on our agenda. We had the public hearing tonight and resolved that. And so what I said I would do is I would set a public hearing for the changes that we made in the plastic ordinance. There were just a few kind of housekeeping changes that after, you know, we passed the original one in consultation and seeing what the landscape looks like, we needed to tweak a couple of things. So I guess I'd like to set a public hearing for our next meeting at 6:15 in the form of a motion.
Motion set it, motion and a second to set the public hearing for the plastics ordinance amendments to August 4th at 6:15. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Salem, can I ask just one question?
You would like the the current version?
Yeah, have you changed it since the since the one that was sent to the council?
We, I think we made a couple tweaks and Owen has that, so I'm I'm sure he would be happy to send it to you ASAP.
Yes, that'd be wonderful.
Will do. Make sure that happens.
And did the, did the attorney get a chance to look at it, Salem?
I I I don't think that the attorney. Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't need an extra review and I don't, is there any money for more solicitor?
No, we're way in 2027.
Doesn't matter anyway. But no, it it, they're all pretty minor changes that I I think probably would fall, you know, outside of anyway, it looks like Owen has his hand up, so I'll let him talk.
Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, President. Counsel Derby, I never speak without the president recognizing me first. Yeah, just to, just to, just to corroborate what the chair is saying, they were really minor housekeeping issues that were completely in the spirit of the original ordinance and I would agree did not need solicitor review. And so Barbara, yeah, I'll send them along. I don't think we made any change to the language that was submitted in the agenda packet. I'll just double check that for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
And I don't believe we have any new business. I haven't set a next meeting for us just because vacations are coming up and and on that note, I apologize, but I'm going to have to, on that next meeting, I'm going to have to have one of my colleagues run that public hearing because I'm going to be sitting on the Mayan Riviera somewhere. So apologize in advance. So yeah, that concludes.
We now all hate you, Salem, but that's fine.
It's probably going to be really hot and humid, so.
Oh, well, yeah. Okay, thank you, Counsel Derby. Counsel Zaret, property. I know you don't have anything on the agenda, but I think you have new business.
Indeed, we do, President Coniff. I'd just like to move, there's new business. Under new business item A, poll location request on Tory Street, add three polls and relocate four polls. This is pretty clear in the packet. There's, there's a couple polls that need to be moved as well as a couple midspan polls for support that are being requested as well. I have to contact the ever source rep and so once I get an idea about their availability, I'll I'll set a meeting. But I think I feel confident right now, President Coniff, that we can have a public hearing at the August meeting. So at this point in time, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for this item on August 4th. Oh, yes, I won't be here, but I will set the public hearing though.
Okay, you want to do it all in one motion, move it to your committee and set the public hearing, then we don't have to vote to us?
Yes, well, actually, probably my duty to be too much.
Counsel Rist has a question.
I'm sure the Counsel Zaret and Counsel Derby aren't going to be at the meeting on the 4th. I'm going to ask Counsel Peak, are you going to be there for the ordinance review?
I'll be there.
Okay, great.
Okay. Go ahead, Counsel.
Well, is it, it's, and I just wanted to consult, it's okay to make a motion for both? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, a single motion with two parts. First, to move this new business item, item A, poll location request on Tory Street, add three polls or relocate four polls to the property committee and to set a public hearing for this item on August 4th.
Okay.
Motion second to move the poll location request on Tory Street to property committee and to set a public hearing for 8/4. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild? Lindsay?
Hi.
She I did.
Owen Zaret?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
President Coniff, may I ask a question for clarification?
Yep.
That meeting, is that in person or is that remote?
Which one? The 8/4?
The August council meeting.
TBD.
Okay, if it's remote, I might be able to attend.
Okay.
And thus concludes.
Okay, thank you. All right, rules in government relations, Counsel Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. We are going to meet tomorrow for the first time in a little while to discuss all the stuff on our agenda. And I noticed that one of the things, which is the Council Rule 11 H Amendment, will otherwise expire before we meet again. So I'd like to request a 90 day extension on that.
Second.
Motion second to extend Council Rule 11 H Amendment, 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
I saw her mind.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Hi.
And thus concludes.
All right, thank you, Counsel Peak. We kind of just talked about ranked choice voting, so I don't think we need an update from that committee. Senior tax work off, Counsel Kozinski, anything new to add there?
We haven't had any additional meetings and I would defer to Madam President if you had any new information.
I don't, I do know that applications have opened and that applications are now being reviewed. They've gotten some responses, but beyond that, nothing additional to add. Ordinance Review Committee, Counselor Rothschild, anything there?
Uh, we are meeting on August 2nd at 6:30 PM. That's a Monday. We're hoping in that meeting to, I'm going to be bringing a draft of kind of the table, table style report we talked about, so we're going to be working, because we're hoping that will be an in-person working meeting. We're really hoping that that will be the goal, so that's, that's the next meeting and that concludes.
So again, you'll probably be targeting one of the September meetings to present to us instead of the August 4th meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, cool. All right, we have done old business and we've done new business. I will take a motion to adjourn.
The move, second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, Barbara.
Erica Flood.
I.
Omar Gomez.
I.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
I.
Dan Rist.
I.
Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Oh, sure.
Salem Derby.
I.
Okay, motion is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great.
Shortest meeting in two years.
See you later. Bye.